One nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, before we get into our agenda, we do have a press release here regarding the coronavirus, and it reads as follows. Dedicated professionals at our county's health department are leading the community's response and will continue to do so. The staff is meeting with their counterparts in various state and local agencies to ensure that our message is accurate and up to date. We're making efforts to ensure that both our young people and aging populations know the facts about the virus and how best to combat it. Allegheny County government is taking the following steps in light of the spread of this virus. Number one, we're revoking all authorizations of any county finance travel to any out-of-state locations as health of our staff remains priority. Number two, we strongly encourage the payment of tax and utility bills online. A link to the online bill payment is placed on the county's website. There's no additional fees for this service, and bills can be paid by check or money order. We're working with vendors and any event organizers who have events. We're scheduled at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds, and we'll work with them should they desire to cancel any upcoming events at the fairgrounds. Number four, we will continue to monitor the spread of this virus and make adjustments to staffing as needed. It's moments like these that our community can and must come together to work to slow the spread of the coronavirus. Staff will have additional information tomorrow afternoon regarding the -- regarding what the county's response is going to be in terms of internal affairs. Okay, thank you all. Onto our action agenda. Item number one is a priority letter to M.D., regarding our projects. Sierra Wigfield.
Good evening. So every year, we send our transportation requests to the Secretary of Transportation. These are to further consideration for the capital improvement program on like state infrastructure. So each year, we ask all the municipalities in the county to put -- bring their projects together. Then we sit down, we have a meeting, and we prioritize the projects in order that we feel that they need to be completed. We have 16 projects this year, and we hope to see either the next phase of the project to be completed. So sometimes we ask for planning, and then the following year, we ask for engineering or right-of-way or construction. So we have been seeing our projects -- we had a big long list to start with, like 20 projects, but we've continued to see funding for those projects. We also asked the endorsement of the municipalities and the state delegation on the letter. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'd like you guys to sign the priority letter so we can send it to the secretaries.
Wonderful. Sierra, thank you for all your work on that. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sierra.
Okay. Onto our consent agenda. Mr. Butler.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item number two is the amendment number one of the master program agreement with Extend Health LLC. Item number three is an appointment to the emergency services board. Item number four is the special operations box truck for the Department of Emergency Services. Item number five is a special operations pickup truck for the Department of Emergency Services. Both gentlemen were as approved through the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 20 through 24. And item number six is the Old Town Summer Fest authorization for the community -- out of the community promotions account.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir. I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Attorney Beeman.
I have nothing.
Mr. Butler.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Caprelli.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Broderick.
Sir, I have another meeting here shortly, so nothing yet.
Great. Well, I think we're a little ahead of schedule. I will say, we were -- we started the day at 1:00. We had our budget hearings. We had half of our outside funding agencies here. As we go through the budget again, we're trying to be as cautious as possible. There's some unknowns with how the state's going to do Kerwin and a few other things. So in terms of revenues, we're trying to err on the cautious side so we don't get in a situation this year or the next year where we'd have to raise taxes, which we don't want to do. So those will continue in two weeks. I do want to say for everyone, take the coronavirus seriously, be aware of it, don't go out if you don't need to, and make sure, you know, you have -- if you have prescriptions, if you need food in your house, it's not stocked, make sure you have all of those on hand. We've been in contact with the state and our local health department, and questions, if you think you have contracted the virus, please contact the health department as soon as possible. Okay? Thank you. All right. We do have three people signed up to speak tonight. The first is Mr. Mark Deckers.
Good evening. My name is Mark Deckers. I am a resident of the Harwood subdivision. Just let you know that I am opposed -- I want to talk about the proposed project for Dan's Mountain Wind Force on the Dan's Mountain there. I am opposed to it. Tonight, what I would like to talk about, and I've got some prepared statement I would like to read through, but in summary, what I want to talk about is the probable impact to the well water supply and concerns. There is a permitting process. There's some issues in the permitting that I would like to have addressed, but I want to talk through where our concern is. So the Allegheny County Code 360-107, which addresses these wind turbine farms, is the permitting process. In that permitting, there is a duration -- a period of duration after the construction phase is completed. And I've got a question about how that code will be enforced beyond the permitting of the construction phase into the project and the time period that's stipulated within that code. Second question that I have has to do with, basically, it's subsection E of that code that addresses the groundwater protection bond. And a question that I have is, have the Commissioners asked for, or has Dan's Mountain Wind Force presented a risk mitigation plan in the event that the health department must exercise other remedies as stipulated in subsection E of Code 360-107? So there's a section in there for risk mitigation, but there's nothing about it. The third question that I have in addressing the same subsection is, it addresses occupied structures within a one-mile radius. So two questions on that is, I don't know, but will there be farmers that may be impacted that are up in that area that draw water for their cattle or for their process? The other is, is we all know that water drains downhill and goes a lot further than one mile. We believe that the one-mile zone is inefficient. We, those that live outside of that one mile, are concerned of what that may impact -- how that's going to impact us. So our concerns are based off of the land formation where this project will sit. We have anecdotal evidence about what happens to affected wells. And thirdly, there's a concern from a county study that was done on bringing water up into that area in about the 2006 timeframe. What we do know about the proposed area is that it's within the Appalachian plateaus. This region is defined by fractured rock, which is not highly pervious and does not contain very good recharge areas. A recharge area, for those that don't know, is defined as a surface area where rainwater can enter back into the ground and recharge the underground aquifer. The foundations for these wind turbines are estimated to be about 40 feet across and 6 to 30 feet in depth with possible footers driven further into the ground. The foundations will sit atop the mountain in relatively flat areas that are almost certainly recharge areas for the existing aquifers. In addition, any storage or equipment structures probably will have an impact, but albeit that'll probably be minimal compared to the foundations. And any footers that have to be blasted will penetrate into the rock formation and will probably have an impact on the underground aquifers. Now we get into the other side that's not as well-known. The mapping of groundwater and the underground rock formation in this area does not exist. Therefore, we have to rely on anecdotal data available to the aquifer supplying the water to the landowners on either side of the mountain. Just about any person living in this affected area who relies on well water can attest that every time a new well is drilled, someone else's well is negatively impacted. Wells that were once artesian in the spring no longer have the same underground pressure. Evidence is beginning to appear showing increased surface water in some areas and decreased where it used to be in others. Wells are beginning to experience an increase in turbidity. Now, in the event that the rehabilitate -- and this goes to the sections of the code that address remediation efforts. In the event that well rehabilitation or redrilling fail, what is the proposed plan or options? Our concern is that there is no economical and timely plan. In late 2005, early 2006, Allegheny County had considered the installation of a water tower on Dan's Mountain above Harwood to provide a second balanced pressure source against the Piney Reservoir that feeds into the Frostburg water -- public water supply. The residents of Harwood were told at that time that bringing water up onto Dan's Mountain was not feasible. I don't recall that the evidence were given specifics, but at the time, it appeared to be related to cost, time, and the fact that the existing road would be greatly impacted. So here is how this proposed project in these conditions brings about our serious concern. For starters, the one-mile zone defined within the Allegheny County Code most certainly does not protect the vast majority of landowners on the north end of either side of the mountain. Aggressive earth movement will be required to place foundations in the existing rock formation. How will this earthwork affect the quantity and quality of underground water aquifers? Nobody knows. How will these concrete foundations close off, limit, or create excessive runoff which then limits the underground aquifers from being recharged? Nobody knows. Should any loan owner have their water supply quantity or quality impact? Who then has the burden of supplying the water into the area that the county has previously designated as infeasible for public water supply? And finally, nowhere does a plan exist that states a timely execution of any of these proposed remedies. So in the end, I end this with the basic concern that is covered in the original question. Who owns the burden of developing and executing a project risk plan for the probable impact to the aquifers on either side of Dan's Mountain? So if I have time of the two questions is, what I would have is, does -- how does the Allegheny County zone, once the permit process is finished, how do those regulations get passed on to anyone who either assumes that project, participates in that project, or the construction is finished and the phase goes on?
Lee.
Mr. Deckers, the code requires for both decommissioning bonds as well as groundwater bonds, those are requirements for this project to be put in place. Those will be in place prior to any ground being broken on this project. As far as ensuring the permitting process, we do have our permitting department here with inspectors that would be responsible for ensuring compliance with that.
So those permits -- great, I understand. The permits will collect the bonds and will hold that. Who ends up doing the work? Is the money sufficient to hire someone? I know in there it states that the health -- county health department has the right to pull in their own well drillers. So people like that would do that.
The code contemplates bonds sufficient in both of those situations that would cover either of those situations should -- should the developer fail to properly -- in the case of decommissioning, should they fail to properly decommission, the decommissioning bond is sufficient to decommission the tower? Should they fail to comply with the groundwater requirements, the groundwater bond would be sufficient?
So there's a section that deals with the groundwater, and there's a section on decommission. I think E and F. Those two are -- so section E is the concern right now that we were -- so there would be money in there. And the other question, I guess, is, do you plan to -- with this code, do you plan to enforce the entire code and all the other codes that are associated with it to anybody that applies for this?
Yes.
The second question that I have is, the -- well, it really gets to the one mile. I'd get to that because one mile is not covering the vast majority of people. What's going to happen to anyone who is outside of that one-mile zone and what that's affected by this? Because the water starts at the top of that and is going to go down and spreads out. And no one, I mean, we don't -- I can't tell you, I don't think anybody here knows. We don't -- our science is not good enough to map underground groundwater, but we do know what happens, and we do know that it flows downhill. So what happens to the people that are outside of that one-mile zone? Is the burden left on those people?
Well, as the current code stipulates one mile, I mean, and if any issues would arise outside of that one mile, you know, I think it would depend on a court of competent jurisdiction to -- for that person to avail themselves to. With that, sir, I think we're -- we've definitely hit our over five minutes, and appreciate your comments.
All right. Up next is Kenneth Wilmot.
Kenneth Wilmot, I live at 513 Fort Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. I'm back again to speak absolutely against anything going back out in Rocky Gap State Park, especially a stupid water park. Now then, people who thought this idea was really good, they never gave any thought whatsoever. Since I volunteered at places before, a casino was in, golf course, and I can tell you, the water level in them days was a good four or five feet higher than it is now. Now then, the casino and the hotel has number one priority on the water coming out of the lake. Number two is the golf course. They've been promised as much water as they can get, they need. Now then, what feeds Rocky Gap? There's about umpteen dozen springs that feed that lake, and they're all cold. You go to some of them, it's so cold coming out of there that you can't hold your hand in. That's why it's good job fishing out at the lake because the water's so cold. Now then, that water park gets in there, how much water are they going to suck up? First thing is, they're going to have to sanitize it, and then they're going to have to heat it because you can't take water out of that lake and run a water park, I guarantee you. Just watch them go swimming in the middle of the summer, and you'll see what I mean. I've been in that lake many -- I know every inch of that lake and the park because I kept it -- I worked three and a half years as a volunteer, so I know what's going on out there. Since they put in the casino, the water level has dropped again because you got, I don't know how many people, I'm sure that they all use the bathroom once or twice while they're there, you know? So -- and then the next thing is, you're going to cut down 40 acres of trees. We need our trees. They are the ones that provide you, me, and everybody else with the oxygen that we breathe. We need it. And it takes carbon dioxide out of the air. That is our problem. We've been cutting down our trees for hundreds of years without any forethought. We are now at that point, we've kept the other way. We've got to do something. We've got to stop cutting down our trees for, I mean, like this water park. It's ridiculous. How many water parks have we got within 100 miles of Cumberland? I know a friend, he goes, I think he would go about an hour and a half someplace and takes his kids to the water park. So we don't need it. My -- like I suggested last week, if we want a water park, put it on Ballmer Street. Get all some people to Ballmer Street. Let them slide from the top of McKee's Hill down to the bottom. Anyway, I appreciate you listening, but please, when these people come up with you to you with ideas, do you keep it in its pure nature? People don't come up here to see a water park or ugly buildings. They come up and sit back and relax because in the cities, they don't see nothing like that. You and I see it every day, but do we appreciate it? That's the problem. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. All right. Up next, we have Ms. Darlene Park.
At the last county commissioner meeting, I presented documentation that Dan's Mountain Wind Force filed a 70-megawatt project with Public Service Commission when the Board of Zoning Appeal only approved a 37.5-megawatt project. I suggested to you then to resend your letter filed with the PSC in November 2019 that stated you were in favor of the project. As county commissioners, you took oath stating, quote, "I do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skills and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of County Commissioner of Allegheny County according to the Constitution and the laws of the state," unquote. It's very disturbing you chose not to participate in the Maryland Court of Special Appeals against Dan's Mountain's appeal of the 2015 Boza decision. Why did you not support County Code 360-107? It's very disturbing you chose to partially participate against Dan's Mountain's application for case number 9413 in 2016. Those wind turbines would have been 580 feet for a total of 59.5-megawatt project. You only argued your preemption to rule the county. The provisions, you provided no testimony or arguments to protect the health, safety, welfare of communities adjacent to the project from noise, infrasound, shadow flicker, loss of home value, loss of wells, turbine electromagnetic interference for 911 and cell phones, and for family homes from becoming unlivable and unsellable. Why did you not support the County Land Code 360-107? It's very disturbing that you did not participate in the Circuit Court for Baltimore City against Dan's Mountain's appeal to the PSC decision to deny them a certificate of public convenience and necessity. Why did you not support the County Code 360-107? It's very disturbing you accepted campaign donations in elections when Dan's Mountain has been involved in ongoing litigation at all levels of court hearings since 2015 to present. You are beholden to Dan's Mountain and not to the residents of Allegheny County. Allegheny County land use codes are Maryland law that you took an oath to abide by. In April 2018, the Court of Special Appeals remanded Dan's Mountain's appeal back to the Boza to reopen the 2015 transcript to reevaluate uniqueness factors, the nexus and the practical difficulty. It was a very disturbing -- you replaced three judges and two aldernets to the Boza from August 23rd, 2018 to September 12th, 2019. The hearings were disgraceful. Two judges dismissed all opposition testimony because they did not consider us expert witnesses, and then reversed all of the 2015 Boza decision in favor of Dan's Mountain. The length you went to unfollow Allegheny County land use code 360-107 is disgraceful and an injustice to the county residents. You men have proven why Maryland legislators gave the Maryland Public Service Commission the greater power over county governments. You need not answer any of my questions. There is no justification for your behavior and what you have put the residents through since 2016 to overturn the 2050 Boza decision in favor of Dan's Mountain. You have not won, but have brought great dishonoring disgrace to the county and the position of Allegheny County commissioners. You are allowing the Windfar Company to break our laws. Your actions are disgusting. I am against the wind turbines and everything you have done behind closed doors and under the table.
I have not done nothing behind no closed doors or behind no tables, just because I haven't come up.
You made the decision not to participate.
I -- Darlene, I lived there and lived there long before you and anyone else. My family's been on that mountain since the 1780s.
And how are you related to the Lords? That's what we were asked at the Midland.
I'll tell everyone, my grandmother was a Lord. That whole mountain belonged to the Lords, and it was supposed to be -- stay in the Lord family forever, period, period. There's been no payoffs, there's been no nothing, and I resent you coming up there and slandering us because you don't like it.
The facts are here. You did not participate in here.
You don't like it. You attacked me in 2010, and I got the papers out in a truck to prove it, that you papered the county against stuff about me. And I've sat here, and I took it then, and I took it last week. You don't like them because I don't have no problem with them. You want to control everyone else's ground. How would you like it if someone come up to you and said, "We don't want your house there. Move it."
Well, that's what's going to happen. Nobody is going to be able to live on that mountain.
And as far as the water and stuff, when them house was being built, and I worked up there for Pat Constantine, there was a water issue before that. But if you want to really get back, when Delta stripped across the top of the hill, there's probably where your water issue may have started, but that was a lot deeper than 30 feet when they went across the top of both of those hills. I live over on the other hill. I have an artesian well. I've always had an artesian well. My well's 70 feet deep. Mom and dad's got an artesian well. No one has bothered our well. Our well has been there for 100 and some years.
The facts that I brought here are true.
The facts are, it's handled by the court. The Commissioners did nothing, nothing.
You rebuilt the Boza court.
Wait, their terms was up.
Yeah, but they wanted to redo.
Hi, Ms. Park. Hold on a second. No, hold on. Because people that have served, hold on, since, some of which before I was ever born, 1991, 1994, people get in these positions unaccountable to anyone, don't even know anyone, and they expect to just getting, you know, appointed again and again and again, and whether it's the zoning board, whether it's the liquor board, these things need to change over. And you say we stacked the board. We must have done a pretty bad job.
Well, you did it.
Apparently, we did. Because all three of those people made their own decisions, and that's why it wasn't unanimous vote.
Right.
And to sit up here and accuse us when we've spent $100,000 the first time defending the board's decision, and now we're not doing it. We stand with whatever the zoning board's decision was, and when it was against it, that's what we did.
So you stand for our -- our tax money is thrown out?
We stand.
Is that all right? Is that a Maryland program?
Ma'am, ma'am, you accused us.
Ma'am, ma'am, you accused us of not following the laws of the state of Maryland.
Yes, I am.
Which is simply not true. It's not true and you know it's not true. And you can come in here and say whatever you want. I'm sure you have. Why did this get remanded? Maryland Court of Special Appeals, not us.
And why? Because you didn't participate in the portion of the board's decision.
That's not true. That's not true.
All right, show me your-
That's not true.
Show me the information you provided to the Court of Special Appeals. There is none. I asked for it and was told you did not participate.
We spent over $100,000 of your tax dollars trying to defend the first decision which turned out to be erroneous. Period. Period. It was overturned. It was incorrect. They were told, they were told to rehear it.
We'll see in Circuit Court and you will see. Because you're costing our citizens a lot of money one way or another, but you were wrong.
And you want to spend more tax dollars to do this again. To do it again.
Well, let's face it, you have back doors. You are more beholden to Dan's Mountain to us. You have not supported us. I haven't seen you at any of the hearings. Were you at the Boza hearing the last time? I mean, it was-
No, no, hold on. You say that we influenced the Board of Zoning Appeals, but then you want us there to influence them. So I'm not sure what you want.
No, you're not listening to me. You're twisting words and you know what?
You read a prepared statement for five minutes. There's no twisting going on. And I do-
My prepared statement is correct.
The norm, hold on a second. The people that come in here and we're happy to talk to afterwards, before, during, any of us, we'll give you our numbers, we'll give you our emails, set up a meeting with us. But this is out of bounds and it's really a shame. It really is.
No, it's a shame what you have done to the residents in Allegheny County by not following the code fully, the way you're supposed to do. You opened a back door by not participating in the Court of Special Appeals and Dan's Mountain told them what they wanted and they walked in here. And, you know, you had a judge on the Court of Special Appeals that was really adamant upset what the other two were doing. It is totally beyond court recognition that you would take somebody's testimony that you're, that they did in 2015 and took all the opposition and threw it out and then made a decision to overturn the 2015. That's what I'm upset about. You don't do that. This is America. This is not a communist country.
It is America, but only for America for some, it seems like.
No, well, that's what I'm saying about you.
Because if you were saying, about me, if this was about all of Allegheny County, the easy thing to be would be just to go ahead and just do away with all regulations because who's, who's paying for this is all of Allegheny County.
Do you understand what these wind turbines are going to do to five communities, over 2,000 people? Do you, do you realize, you don't really realize-
I do realize because I'm the same as everyone else. I look across the hill and see them sitting right above Mount Sabbath.
But it's not the same as being 3,000 or 5,000 feet away.
I'm going to be about 2,100 feet away.
I know you are. I already figured it out.
I know too because you was the one that stuffed my mailbox full of stuff when you was up there.
I didn't.
Yes, you did. Because I called the postmaster because I got your tag number. And you, I remember out in town, I got the stuff out in the truck, Darlene.
See, where do you live? You live on Lord Road-
Sand Spring Road, last house up.
Yes, and I didn't know it was you.
And it's me and my dad and my son that live there.
Okay.
And we own 9.7 acres, I own. And I've heard all the stuff that I'm getting wind turbines and, Mr. Wilmot, don't matter right now.
Yeah, but you know what?
And this and that, and that couldn't be further from the truth. And they give me $500 for that. I didn't ask for it and I didn't ask for none of that. But you know what? If you get through my campaign stuff, I got a lot of money from a lot of people. I wasn't opposed to them. I'm not in favor of them. I'd rather drill for gas and oil, but we can't. We're not allowed. And I know where you stand on that because you made that real clear too.
Well, with water issues, yes. Being strip mine before-
Yes.
What are you asking for? And gas has been tapped out of there by-
No, it hasn't. In 1977, when Texas Eastern came up there and told us then that we were sitting on a mountain of gas and oil, then, and that was long before Harwood and everything else, when Delta was in there stripping in the 80s, none of this was even thought of. So don't sit and make it out that I'm some kind of bad guy because I don't want to go tell everyone else what they're doing with their property.
I'm telling you, as county commissioners, you did not follow the-
We did what we were supposed to do. I thought this was done.
You did what you wanted to do. You wasn't thinking about the community.
You'll be okay if we broke the law to suit you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone. All righty. With that, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, March 26 at 5:00 p.m.